So quiet as this room has been in a long time, for sure. But, the bell means that it's time for us to start, so I'm going to gavel our meeting to order. This is the council's regular February 21st meeting that we're holding tonight. We have several items on the agenda that we will be getting to, but the first order of business is to call the role of our council. So, Adam Clerk, would you do that?
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Proton Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Okay, thank you so much for doing that, and council, thank you all for being here this evening. As most of you know, we open our meetings usually with a pledge of allegiance and also with an invocation, and I'll call on councilmember Kathy Behringer, who will lead us in both of those items. If you're able to stand and can, we invite you to do that at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we see it?
You would join me if you will? Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight humbly, asking for wisdom and grace as we make the decisions. We hear the petitions and we make decisions for the well-being of our town. We ask that you help us make the best decisions possible. And we also ask for mercy with regard to the war in Ukraine and for the victims of the earthquake in Syria and Turkey. This devastation is very hard to bear, and we ask for your grace to help these folks get through it and show us how we can support them. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Ms. Behringer. Okay, the next item of business is where we have petitions and comments. I'll just read to you the information as relates to that. This is the portion of the meeting to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting, that would be preferable. The board is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And I do have one sign up this evening, and I will ask anyone who appears before us to limit your comments to about three minutes, so that we can stay on schedule. So, Mr. Jake, is it Howland? I don't want to mispronounce the name. Okay, Mr. Howland, if you will.
Hi, how are y'all doing? So, I'm Jake Howland. I'm a local business owner and resident. So, I came today because of some recent news that you all have probably seen, big train derailment, fire, in East Palestine, Ohio, right? So, I bring that before you today, just because it was just so impactful, and, you know, we have a pretty similar situation with a railroad coming right through the middle of our town as well. And I will try to keep this three minutes, I'll do my best. All right, so, since that's happened, some of the details have come out. Some of you may know that do know me, I am a chemist prior to opening my business, so I'll kind of talk a little bit, not too technically, about that. But, that accident occurred with the Norfolk Southern train. Fortunately, it happened in a relatively low population area and on the outskirts of town. It did happen on a rail line right through a downtown area, and it does, should, I think, sound familiar to a lot of you, kind of similar situation here. What we know about it, it was piling a lot of different things like trains do. One of the most critical and most important, as has been discussed, is vinyl chloride. If you don't know anything about vinyl chloride, vinyl chloride is a carcinogen, it's poison, it is a gas that is transported as a liquid in compressed tanks. So, this train, you know, derailed, punctured, breached, boiled into the atmosphere, and they decided a controlled burn would be the best plan of attack. So, previously, before this last spill, the largest spill of vinyl chloride was last year in New Jersey, another train derailment. That one train car was breached, it leaked out, did not catch on fire. It's important to note that that train did have four other tankers of vinyl chloride on it, similarly to this one in Ohio, right? So, the one in Ohio had, by the way, that was about 23,000 gallons, okay? So, the one in Ohio is something along the lines of a million pounds, so almost 100,000 gallons, if not a little bit more than that. And then it was lit on fire. And the one in New Jersey did result in, you know, evacuation, and 20 or so people had respiratory distress and these kind of things, just local people around the area, right? So, Northern Norfolk Southern train and East Palestine had five tankers of vinyl chloride. Just think about that for a minute, you know, just it derailed right on the edge of town. What if this was maybe Joan Sausage Road in Garner, near East Garner Middle, Tryon Road area, a lot of stuff up there, you know, just, it's kind of scary when you start to think that way, right? So, this incident was somehow worse because it was on fire. So, vinyl chloride, when it burns, a few things happen to it, like most things, it breaks down into some other compounds. You know, one of these is phosphine, and the other is hydrogen chloride. So, those two things, phosphine, we'll start with that one. Extremely poisonous, heavier-than-air gas. It is listed in the Chemical Weapons Convention as tightly controlled as a chemical weapon agent, previously used in World War I as a chemical weapon against the Germans by the So, pretty dangerous stuff. And then the other one, hydrogen chloride, it burns and turns into hydrochloride in the presence of water. Hydrogen chloride is hydrochloric acid, which then is in the air, turns into acid rain, comes back down to the ground. So, this was the better plan of attack, according to the authorities at the time in Ohio, than just letting it leak or do the cleanup. It was put all that in the air, which is a little bit scary, if you think about it. So, why am I talking about railroad safety in a town council meeting? That's maybe the next question, right? I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the council, you know, because this incident, in a lot of ways, was thought to have been preventable, or was almost like a ticking time bomb, based on a lot of the policies of the railroads and that kind of thing. Operational policies like longer trains, this train in Ohio was over two miles long, for instance. Probably feel the same way about the ones that are coming through town sometimes, when you're sitting at the railroad crossings, waiting for it to go by. You know, less workforce, larger trains, more harmful chemicals on said trains, a lot of different things, in a combination together can create these really horrible situations. So, I have a feeling that if a railroad representative is here, they try to play it off as like, oh, this is rare, it never happens, this is nothing that you should be concerned about. I looked it up, I kind of did some investigation. National Highway Trade, Bureau of Transportation Statistics says there's about 1,700 train derailments a year. If there were 1,700 airline crashes a year, nobody would fly, right? That would, no way, right? So, it's a lot, most of them don't result in injuries, thankfully, but all it takes is for one that has a container of vinyl chloride on it, and you have a big problem. So, and that was kind of the average over about a 30-year period. So, it's a big data set, it's pretty common for that to happen. And, the fact that there's been two derailments within the last year, that both concluded vinyl chloride that leaked, and all these other things with hazardous chemicals, says it's maybe not quite as rare as I think the railroads are trying to make us feel like it is, right? So, long-winded statement, I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the town, because I'm thinking about it as a business owner and a resident who happens to live within a few hundred yards of the railroad tracks as well. You know, there may be something that can be done with cooperation with other towns, cooperation with the state and local governments, that kind of thing, to A, make sure that what's happening in the town is safe. The other side is, you know, how many thousands of gallons of dangerous chemicals are going through the town every day? Do we have any idea? And the answer is no, nobody knows. You know, fire marshal doesn't know, train doesn't communicate that, they're not supposed, they don't have to. So, how much of that is something that can change, so that at least you all can have that information, so that as you are making decisions as far as zoning and approving plans for things like apartments that are right next to the railroad and that kind of thing, you can consider that as part of those judgments, right? So, just asking to look into that possibility, is there anything at all that could be done to work with other units, other parts of government, whatever it may be, and hopefully get us to the point where public safety is kind of a little bit more front of the list, as opposed to whatever it is now, wherever it is on the list, I'm pretty sure it's not number one, right? So, leave you with that, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howland. And I suspect many of us here share that concern, or places where trains pass through, I know these have happened numerous times in various places across the country, and so I'm sure we'll have some further discussion relating to your concerns with senior staff and some others, and perhaps seek a little more information regarding the concerns you mentioned here. So, thank you for taking your time to come out this evening. I let you go a little over three minutes, but that's all right, it worked out pretty well.
Mr. Mayor, may I add a couple of comments?
Please, yeah.
Yeah, so, just to let you know that we do multi-agency disaster preparedness exercises, we do tabletop exercises, and actually, a few years ago, we actually did a mock train derailment. And in a few months, we're going to do another mock exercise based on something else, but we do have multi-agencies from the state, Raleigh Hazmat, Wake County Emergency Management, Garner Fire, Garner Police, and we all do practice the response. Now, there's nothing we can do about the actual incident, because we don't have control over the train or the tracks, but we do prepare for the response, the best we can.
Okay, thank you for that, yeah. And I remember doing some testing relating to that a couple of years ago.
Some Incident Command?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, I believe it was.
Training, yep.
So, okay, all right, thank you. All right, well, the next item of business is a couple of presentations that I always enjoy. So, at this time, I'm going to recognize, well, oh, excuse me, yeah, didn't we already adopt the agenda? No, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, yeah, the next item of business, just a minute, Mr. Jones. Council, you have the agenda before you. We'll talk about some things when we get to the public hearing area, but I would ask you this time to consider adopting the agenda as you have it before you.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Motion made in second, properly. If you're in favor of doing that, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Excuse the opposition, no, there is none. Thank you, Ms. Behringer. Now, I think I can get to the presentations, probably. So, I'm going to recognize Mr. Forrest Jones. We're very proud that Public Works has earned a reaccreditation, not trying to steal your thunder, but you have a person here this evening that is going to present some information to us, so the floor is yours, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, for allowing us to come and present. I'll invite Jeff Brown up at this time. He is our Region Three Director with American Public Works Association. He's been in that role now for a little over a year, I believe, and he also happens to be from North Carolina. He is a Public Works Director for the town of Morrisville. So, he is a North Carolina native, and we're happy to have him with us this evening, so always fun when you can have, be recognized, and certainly when you're recognized by friends and colleagues, it even makes it more special. So, I'll turn it over to him now, and then we'll follow back up with a few closing words.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, thank you, Forrest. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I will say it is a great honor to be here. It's a time of celebration for the town of Garner. I know how much work goes into accreditation and reaccreditation. Forrest, when the town of Garner was first accredited, served as the accreditation manager. And I think Tyson Langdon has served in that role for this, reaccreditation this time. But that is a huge responsibility and a huge lift for Public Works. So, I just want to say a few things about accreditation. As far as that, I am the Region Three Director. Region Three consists of the North Carolina chapter, South Carolina chapter, the Tennessee chapter, the Kentucky chapter, and the Mid-Atlantic chapter, which consists of West Virginia, Virginia, and Maryland. So, I come before you tonight representing APWA National and recognizing this honor for your organization. I did want to read one thing here that speaks about accreditation. Accreditation is the mark of professionalism indicating a public works agency has made the commitment to continuous improvement in delivery of public works operations and services in the community it serves. Accreditation recognizes an agency's policies, procedures, and practices which have been evaluated by experienced public works professionals by comparing them against internationally-recognized management practices appropriate for that specific agency. During your accreditation visit, there was 99 total number of practices that were reviewed that the town of Garner has implemented. Of those eight were recognized as model practices that are, you know, to be put forward for other agencies to model their agencies after those practices, so that is a huge recognition. The town of Garner was first accredited, I think, in 2013, the very first public agency in the state of North Carolina to be accredited, and they have paved the pathway for two other ones, so now there are two other additional agencies. I'm proud to say that the town of Morrisville, which I am the Public Works Director, is accredited, and we got our first reaccreditation back in June of last year. And the other agency in the state of North Carolina is Morrisville. So, there's only three agencies in North Carolina that are accredited. This is a huge honor for the town. I commend your support, the town managers and management staff, your support of Public Works. I commend council's support of Public Works. You know, I've known Forrest for a number of years, and Tyson for a number of years. They are both dedicated professionals, and I would say that the town is lucky to have them. And so, it is an honor tonight to present on behalf of APWA. I'm going to ask Tyson, if you would, come up here, because you've had a, you're the reason this is taking part tonight.
But, you know, I present this reaccreditation plaque to the town of Garner, to the public works agency, and this is good for four years, it expires in October of 2026, so I'd like to present that to Tyson and Forrest.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. (applause) So, if you will give me, if you don't?
I would just say one more thing, I'd just say, thank you for allowing me to participate and take honor in being here tonight and celebrating this huge achievement. Kudos to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Recognize Mr. Jones at this time.
Thank you. So, I thanks again, Jeff, for coming out and sharing this, in this moment with us this evening. I would like to first start off by thanking our entire staff here at Public Works for supporting these standards on a daily basis and the work they do delivering service to our residents. Without them, none of this would be possible as well. They are the ones doing the work and helping us prove what we do, and certainly, as Jeff said, it's a lot of work undertaking this from a management leadership level. You've got to spend a lot of time validating that. People no longer just take you for your word at it, you have to document that and prove that to those evaluators who come and assess us, and that's what we did. They looked at 99 practices that we do, we have to comply with around 300 standards that we have total. When they come back for reaccreditations, they only look at a third, so they don't look at every practice, but you still, you don't know what they're going to look at until they get here and ask for it, so you've got to have it all ready. So, I do thank those. I want to thank our leadership for collecting that documentation and spending the time and energy to get it together, get it in the software. But really, it would not be possible, as Jeff's already indicated, without our accreditation manager, Tyson Langdon. He really did a huge lift in this regards. Having done this once or twice before, I can certainly appreciate and understand the work we do, and that's not the only thing we do. He still had another job to do in addition to this and kept us going. As I'll tell a funny story about Tyson, so if you know anything about him, he smiled, he don't want to speak tonight, so he could have took 60 seconds and I would have been quieter for 60. But, he gathered our team up a couple of years ago and said, all right, you know, we do a midterm report, talk about where we are, and then kind of met with everyone and said, here we are, here's what you've got to do, here's your assignments, and, you know, you can work at your own pace, but when we get to this point in time, we're going to start working at my pace. And if I hadn't seen X amount of stuff each week, I'll be crafting time for you to do that. But again, it was, it's a lot of effort keeping up with all the demands we have on a daily basis to get us across that finish line, and I really would like to recognize and thank him for his efforts in that, in helping us be successful and get here today. And then finally, I would thank the town staff, leadership staff, their support in our endeavor and continued support, because this does take time, it's time, we might be doing other things, but refining value in the program, I think this forces us to stop. Look at what we're doing every four years. Just because this is what we did four years ago, is this really what we need to be doing today? Does it meet the standard? Is there a better way to do it for that continuous improvement? So, thank you Rodney and Jody and John for allowing us that opportunity to take that time and make that investment back in the services we provide. And then council, thank you for allowing us that time to do that as well in a commitment. Certainly, it's a financial commitment, it's a staff commitment, and we certainly thank you, and we would not be here without the support of each and every one of you. So, thank you, and with that, we'll go ahead.
If you'll stay there for just a minute, I'll give council an opportunity to express their observations and appreciation, and I was going to ask Tyson, but I believe you said he prefers not to say anything, so, you sure? Okay, all right.
He's a man of few words, but much action, I will say that about him.
Yeah, yeah, I like that, sure enough. So, I'll start at my right down here, and councilmembers, anything you want to comment on briefly would be good. I'll start with Mr. Vance.
Yes, I'd like to say congratulations to you, Forrest, and to the Public Works section and all the hard work that you've done on this reaccreditation, and just say continue and all the hard work that you've done on this reaccreditation and, and just say continue with the, with what you're doing because it appears to be working.
Thank you.
Behringer.
Yeah, just congratulations and always don't spend a lot of time worrying about Public Works because I know you all are doing what you need to do. And also, as I said, as liaison for the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, I always have to remind people the role you all play in our parks as well. So, we have to make a conscious effort to let people know you guys are the ones out there at the parks, not just after storms happen and you've got streets to clean up, but the parks, just the maintenance is, is your responsibility too. So, we have you all to thank for that as well. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
What else can you say except great job? One of the things that stands out to me over and over again is the few times I need to call or get in touch with Public Works for, "I have a question or something needs to be done," I get an answer really quickly or a response. It's not two or three days later that I have to call back and say, "Did you get my message?" It gets taken care of, addressed immediately so that we can move on, and I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you. We're blessed with a good team.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton.
Congratulations, even Tyson and the entire team. People sometimes forget that Public Works take care of our properties, town hall, the athletic fields, our parks, all our facilities. You also do the unrestricted trash pickup, the fall pickup, the storm pickups that pop up and we're not expecting them, and that's along with all the other maintenance that you have to do in town, whether it's sidewalk repair, potholes, you know, whatever it may be. I think people, the scope that y'all cover in the town is just a lot of work. So, congratulations. Job well done.
Thank you.
Me too.
I just did us on what has been said, and we're very proud of you and your team and what y'all have accomplished. And it's always a pleasure to hang around with those guys, and I personally look forward to whatever 3rd of July, when you guys are really getting it done all week out. That's not a one-day event. It's a week-long event. And, but go down and hang out and socialize with those guys and make some of them nervous because some of them are real quiet, and I enjoy sitting there making them talk. So, but you've got a great team over there, and it's obvious by what's been presented here tonight, and just keep on keeping on.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and thank you, council. I echo all the comments that have been made by them, and, yeah, I commend you. Well, remember when you guys were named as a first accredited, excuse me, accredited is the word I'm trying to say, public works operation in North Carolina. That's quite a, that's quite an accolade for sure. And I would say that I try not to call a department head to complain, and I don't think I've had occasion to do that. My main calls to you, I think, Forrest, have been, I call them acts of God, where trees have fallen across the trail. So, you've heard from me on those, and your, your staff is always just very prompt to get out and take care of those things, and you do a great job of taking care of all of our facilities. So, thank you for doing that. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming down, Mr. Brown, and presenting this.
Thank you, absolutely.
Okay.
If we can take just a second, get a picture would be great, and then we'll move along.
Mr. Manager, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything, I'd be happy to.
Oh, I would just say congratulations. You know, Forrest and Public Works, I know I appreciate each and everything y'all do each and every day to make me look good, and I know it's a lot of hard work and effort that goes into it. So, appreciate everything. Congratulations.
Thank you. Here's for Rodney.
Yeah. Yeah. Tyson truly likes to be in the background.
So, the mayor's trying his best to get a picture since you need to like...
No, I'm trying to get, trying to photobomb you, I think. (APWA) One round of applause for him while they... Okay. One other presentation to be made at this time, and this is the time of the year when we usually do this. So, I'm going to recognize Mr. Harold Garner, who has some folks with him he'd like to introduce tonight. So, Mr. Garner, I invite you to the podium, sir.
Mayor, members of the city council, it's always a pleasure to bring Miss Garner girls here to get, to get, for y'all to get to meet them. I don't know, I thought I had retired, but it seems like the only way I'm going to retire is from the turn my toes up and plant daisies on me, you know? And so, I guess I'm just a mentality of my mom. She was 95, and I tried to get her to use a walker. She wouldn't use a walker. She used the canes. I said, "Well, Mom, why, why don't you use the walker?" She said, "'Cause it makes me look old." Now, I know what she was talking about. Anyway, but I'm just happy to have Miss Garner and Garner's outstanding team here with us tonight, and I, they'll go back a few comments, and I know you got a big agenda, so we won't be here that long. So, I'll start out with Garner's outstanding teen, Savannah Holland. Savannah?
Welcome. See.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Savannah Holland, Miss Garner's Teen 2023. Thank you so much for having me. It is an honor to be here and speak in front of you today. This is my first year competing in the Miss America Organization, and it has been absolutely incredible thanks to the Garner community. Today, I wanted to share a little bit about myself, my community service initiative, donating for DBA, and address some of my plans with Garner throughout my journey to Miss North Carolina's Teen in June. I'm a sophomore at Ina River Academy in Hillsborough, North Carolina. I'm 15 years old, a competitive dancer at Hillsborough Cheer and Dance. I've been dancing since the age of three and started competing at age five, falling in love with the art form and continuing it ever since. I'm an extremely hard worker and perfectionist, which is reflected in my schoolwork. I hope to attend NC State and be a part of their dance team while majoring in Health Sciences, hopefully attending physical therapy school after graduating. I also hope to continue in the Miss North Carolina Organization over the next several years. I created my community service initiative in honor of my nana, who had a rare blood disease, Diamond Black Fanemia, or DBA for short. DBA prevents the patient from producing their own red blood cells, requiring them to be transfusion-dependent. My nana was told she would not live past 10, then proceeded to live 65 years, thanks to the incredible gift of blood donation. That's why I use my platform, Donating for DBA, to promote the importance of blood donation and share my personal story as to how blood, blood donation has had such a positive impact on my family. So far, I have organized and hosted two blood drives with the American Red Cross and one with the Blood Connection. Yesterday, I had my blood drive with the Blood Connection right here in Garner, where we had 26 blood donors collecting 26 units of blood. I'm planning to host three more blood drives this year as Miss Garner's Teen with the Blood Connection, and I'm planning for my next blood drive to be this May. We have not set a location or date yet, but as soon as I do, I will make sure to let you know, as I would love for you all to be guests. As far as my plans for Garner, I would like to prioritize serving the community as that is my job as Miss Garner's Teen. I plan on making myself available to attend several community events, such as the Easter Egg Hunt, Garner Relay for Life, and any others. One of my goals as Miss Garner's Teen is to be as involved in the community as possible, and I would greatly appreciate any advice or recommendations on how you feel I would serve the Garner community best. My family and I are huge advocates for supporting local, and as Miss Garner's Teen, I would like to continue visiting and promoting the small businesses of Garner. The heart and soul of any community is its people, and since I have been crowned Miss Garner's Teen, I've been welcomed into this community with open arms. I'm so grateful I was given this opportunity to be a part of the Garner family. Thank you so much for having me. It has been an absolute pleasure speaking with you today. And as we say in the Miss Garner Organization, "Once a Garner girl, always a Garner girl." Thank you. And I would like to introduce my Miss, Chandra Manny Vannan.
Okay. And just before she comes up, could you, you have a family member with you, your mother, I believe, or maybe someone else?
Yes.
At least let's let her stand. I know she's standing behind you.
Hi, I'm Tracy. Nice to meet you.
Good, yeah, thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. I am Chandra Manny Vannan, and I have the honor of serving as your Miss Garner 2023. Briefly, a little bit about me. I am a Wolfpack graduate, Go State. I graduated in 2020 from the College of Engineering and the College of Sciences. I majored in Computer Science and Applied Mathematics with a minor in Spanish, and it was an honor to be a Good Night Scholar. And the Good Night Scholars Program is a full-tuition STEM scholarship program for students from North Carolina who are passionate about STEM subjects and STEM education. And this program has really informed who I am today. It's a, it's a reason why I even participated in the Miss America Organization. And once again, I feel honored and humbled to stand before you today as Miss Garner, as well as as a representative of the Miss America and Miss North Carolina Scholarship Organizations. Over the course of my year as Miss Garner, I have had the privilege of connecting with Garner residents through the Garner Christmas Parade, as well as through my social impact initiative, Selena. Selena is an online platform for survivors of intimate partner violence, which provides comprehensive resources for financial planning, educational awareness on healthy relationships, safety planning, and links to local partners such as Interact and Hope Connection International in Raleigh. I have also had the privilege of volunteering with Dress for Success in Raleigh, which empowers women to dress professionally at a, at a fraction of the cost, an organization which surely empowers and assists survivors with rebuilding their own lives and achieving self-determination. Additionally, through the Miss North Carolina and Miss America Scholarship Organization, I've had the privilege of achieving my graduate education as well through MIT online coursework, as well as Georgia Tech's online Master of Science in Analytics, and this program has definitely changed my life. One last thing I would like to leave you with is a call for action, and I would like to implore you all as public service leaders and public servants to consider expanding your repertoire of resources for survivors of domestic violence. I understand that working together with the private sector and public sector, I think we can really provide the resources that we need for survivors. Sometimes, in a moment of crisis, a survivor may have difficulty accessing the various resources I described, but I can only do so much as an engineer from my perspective building an online platform. But with your, you know, public service platform and your, your, your wealth of experience, I'm sure that you all can create our resources for the town and even introduce those to the state level, you know, with your experience and your reach in the community. And finally, to leave you with this thought, during my year as Miss Garner, I would love to help carry out the vision that town council members have to increase the prosperity and wellness of our Garner community that I love. Thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to connecting with you all individually at your earliest convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce, I believe, is your father who's with you?
Yes, sir, that's my father. His name is Manny.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations to both of you. We are confident you will represent our town very well, and we wish you well. I believe it's in June when you will be appearing for competition. I believe you said in High Point, is that right? So, if anybody wants to go to High Point in June, that would be a good trip up there. Thank you, Harold, for bringing these young ladies in. It's always an inspiration to hear their educational background, and I'll confess, I'm a little biased, and I think Mr. Singleton next to me, ours, but, you know, go Wolfpack. So, yeah, okay. Thank you both for being here. If you want to stick around, fine. If you have to leave, we'll understand as well. The best to you, okay? Thank you. Okay. All right, council, we'll move along now, and the next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. I need to call to your attention, I guess, before we vote, that there is a slight modification under the item number, let me see here, it's number five. As it relates to the, look, well, mine's under the change orders five, six, and that should include a seven there where it says orders five, six, and seven with SA hauling and authorized town manager to execute. So, just make a note that a seven should be there. Does any council member desire to pull an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion or clarification?
Excuse me, Mayor. You may also want to note that item number two, the council meeting schedule, we do have a separate sheet in front of you that has those certain dates on it.
Yes, and hopefully, all of you've had a chance to, to look at that. This is something we've discussed previously, and so tonight is time for us to, to vote on that. You'll notice that the first beginning of the Tuesday meetings will be, at least for the early part of the month, will be April, I believe. Excuse me, yeah. March, well, March 6 is the last Monday meeting. Did I say that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, of course, the other meetings will be Tuesday as normal, but April will be the first meeting that moves to Tuesday. Any other questions or comments?
But the first meeting, the, the last Monday, or the March the 6 meeting, we are starting at 6:00 according to this. So, the 6 o'clock is starting in March, first meeting.
Correct. Yeah, that's right. Well, that's a good note.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was the 21st anyway. Now, I know.
Yep.
I have to make sure I put that one in my thumb because I might forget that one.
Okay. We'll try to call around.
Yeah, just remember, we started at 7:30, then went to 7:00, and now we're at 6:00. Old habits die hard.
You're right. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Those are the only changes that I would, would note for you. Okay. If you favor adopting the consent agenda, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, and there is none, and so it is so ordered. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now go to the next item of business, which is under the heading of public hearings. And so, based on information that, that was brought to my attention, I'm going to go ahead and move item three up to number one, if you will, because I understand that there is a change in that regard, and we probably will not have that hearing tonight, so I'll recognize you at this time for that announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Yes, that is correct. The applicant is requesting a continuance. This is for case SUP-SP-22-04 for a continuance to the March 21st agenda.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That would be at 6:00, based on the new meeting schedule. And just so council knows, Isabel Maddox, the attorney for the applicant, is available on team should you have any questions about this continuance request.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones. Council, any questions, comments, or questions particularly for Ms. Isabel, who's online? Are there any? Okay, I don't believe we have to take a formal vote on this, do we? It's just...
Yes, you need to make a motion to continue it to a specific date and time.
Okay.
Let me continue this SUP-SP-22-04 to Tuesday, March 21st at 6:00 PM.
Right. Okay, any questions about the time and place? Okay, motion's properly before you. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. And opposition, no, and there is none. Thank you, and thank you for being online with us in case we needed you. So, we will look to handle this matter then in March. So, thank you very much. Okay, the next item of business is, we'll go back to what is numbered one, and this would be zoning amendment ZTA-2301, new stormwater requirements for nitrogen control, and that is Ms. Standard, right? Did I say that right? Yeah. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Jaclyn Standard, the Stormwater Program Administrator, here to present the text amendment ZTA-23-01 Stormwater Program for Nitrogen Control. So, general case information, we are the applicant, Town of Garner. The location is Town Limits and the ETJ, and no track size.
The location is Town Limits and the ETJ, and no track size. The meeting dates, so tonight is the public hearing. If council recommends this to Plan and Commission, that will be March 13th, and then it will come back to Town Council for approval on April 3rd, for an implementation date of May 1st. So again, all of Garner, ETJ, and Town Limits is the area that we're looking at. Everything flows to the Neuse River, so everything is included in this program. So a little bit of a background, the Neuse rules, the Neuse River nutrient-sensitive waters management strategy was adopted in 1997 by the Environmental Management Commission, with the goal to achieve 30% nitrogen reduction from controllable and quantifiable sources of nitrogen in the basin. This included non-point sources, such as urban stormwater runoff and agriculture, as well as point source runoff from wastewater treatment facilities. So as part of those original rules, 15 local governments in the Neuse Basin, including the Town of Garner, were required to implement a local stormwater management plan, aimed at achieving 30% nitrogen reduction as it relates to the non-point urban stormwater runoff requirement. The original rules included four general components, new development, review and approval, illegal discharges, retrofit locations, and a public education component. So we're here tonight because the state had to do a mandatory periodic review of all of their rules, and so the Neuse and the Tar PAM nutrient management studies were updated and revised. So we have basically had to update our program requirements as well to match those state One major change is that they've included a post-construction stormwater control and new development in the revised rules. It's important to note that we were already doing this in our old rules. So this actually just, now it's just a dedicated section within the new program where all those requirements will sit. They used to be housed in the new development and approval portion of it. Also included in the rules readoption are newly named communities located in the Neuse Basin that were not previously subject to the rules. I'm not sure why in 1997 they only picked 15 communities, but now they've incorporated everybody that drains to the Neuse River basin. So I'm just going to highlight some of the changes between the old and the new rules. Really, there's not major changes that are happening, just the way that things will be done will be a little bit different. Like I mentioned before, there'll be a post-construction requirement that's clearly defined. The new rules explicitly define disturbance thresholds. We had done this in the old rules and in our old program manual, so we'll just carry those same disturbance thresholds into the new read adopted ones. One of the major changes will be the calculation method that the developers use to generate nitrogen export. Right now, currently, we use two different Method 1 and Method 2 forms. Method 1 is for an estimate on residential subdivisions, where there is no known impervious surface. So we try to estimate a build-out for things like driveway pads and sheds and patios, so that we don't have to track it on individual lots. And then Method 2 is for known impervious surface. So we will be getting away from those calculation methods and using what is called the SNAP tool developed by DEQ. And this will be widespread across everybody that has the Neuse rules requirement. Everybody will be using the SNAP tool. They've removed the retrofit requirements. We only just had to recommend where we would have retrofits. I think they just saw that communities weren't going to build them unless there was a requirement to build them, and then there was no funds to build them, so. The other major change will be built-upon-area threshold for stormwater control device implementation. So as I mentioned, we use Method 1 and Method 2 forms for nitrogen export calculations. That export was determined whether or not a developer had to put in a stormwater control measure. So for the Method 1, they had to use a threshold, if they went over a threshold of 6 pounds per acre per year, they had to implement a stormwater control measure. If it went over 10 pounds per acre per year for Method 2, they had to implement a stormwater control measure. So now, that is going to go away, and everything will be a threshold of 24%. So if they exceed 24% built-upon area, they will have to implement a stormwater control measure. This does not include in the watershed water supply, so if it's in that area that drains to Lake Benson, we have stricter standards, and that's 12%. Those rules supersede these rules. So we'll have more stringent rules within that Lake Benson watershed. They've also removed the one-year peak flow match requirement from the old rules. Those will not be in the new rules, but we will still keep those, because that's part of our rules. So we will still require the peak flow for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events, as well as the 100-year in particular areas of town. There also, this ties back into the post-construction, but a program to ensure maintenance of permitted SEMs and compliance with the rule for life of the development. And with that, Terry and I have kind of worked together with this updated rules to also update some language in the enforcement and add some more enforcement language for this SEM maintenance, since currently what we have now is just language in the nuisance ordinance that is really ambiguous. So we wanted to update that as well, because now's the perfect time to do that, and I'll go through that language at the end of the presentation. So I'm just going to go through each item, as we have changed it, and how it relates to what I just kind of talked about. So the first one, A, that is not changing, that basically just says we will comply with the riparian buffer rules, and that's part of our program. B, we have strike through the nitrogen loading rates that were representative of the Method 1 and Method 2, to just do a general, the project area used for nitrogen calculation and stormwater requirements will be the built-upon, will be the site minus any existing built-upon C is what we've already talked about, developers shall provide onsite stormwater treatment for anything that is greater than 24% BUA, and must meet other state rules, or other requirements of the rules. D is basically, any additional built-upon area or expansions are also going to be subject to these stormwater rules. So for example, if somebody was to come in and develop a parcel in June with, let's say, 40% BUA, and then in five years, they come in for a modification and want to add in another 10 or 20% impervious surface, all of that cumulative BUA has to be treated with stormwater. They can't do like individual little projects here and there. E is addressing residential subdivisions. So currently, right now, with Method 1, we're using a 20% estimate for single-family lots, which I think we all sort of know that that number is really low, considering that lots are getting smaller, and subdivisions, and houses are getting bigger. So what we've come up with on the following table is some estimations for single-family lots. So these are very conservative estimates of what will be the limitations on the lots as developers come in for plan review. Keep in mind that the overall impervious surface of the subdivision is going to be looked at. So this is just an estimate for these impervious surfaces on the lots. Anything over the 12% BUA or 12% in the Lake Benson watershed are going to be subject to a stormwater control measure. So right now, so we're proposing less than or equal to the R4, single-family, we're going to say 35% impervious surface area is a conservative final build-out, and this includes the actual house with driveway pad, plus anything in the future if they come in for a shed, or a driveway pad, or a patio, so that we don't have to track that on individual lots as they develop. R8 will be at a 45% on the individual lot. Multifamily and commercial will be looked at in the SNAP tool with a known impervious surface area. So projects shall meet a stormwater nitrogen loading rate target of 3.6 pounds per acre. This is the same as the old rules. Or they can meet what's called volume runoff match. This space, volume runoff match basically is defined as the runoff leaving the site post-development will not be 10% greater than the volume that's leaving the site pre-development. Project area for the nitrogen calculations and stormwater requirements in the site, less any existing built... So this, I think G is actually similar to B. When I was doing this, I think that that one probably needs to come out, because it's very similar to B. So I apologize that that wasn't, I didn't review it quite clearly. There's a little bit of a language difference in G as opposed to B, but it's basically saying the same thing. H is what is already happening. The developer has to determine the nitrogen loading rate before stormwater control measures to determine the requiring nitrogen load reduction in order to meet the targets, and this will be done using that SNAP tool that the state has developed. I is basically saying that the nitrogen loading standards are not replacements for other federal, state, or local laws, like the riparian buffer protection laws, or our watershed protection laws. Those laws are going to supersede some of this nitrogen stuff. J is something that's already a requirement. Basically, if a stormwater control measure is proposed by a developer, they have to build it according to the DEQ design manual and the state's minimum design criteria. K is basically saying that any high-density stormwater, and that's going to be determined by the SNAP tool, the high-density requirement, it's also going to kick in a requirement for the 1-inch of rainfall treatment or equivalent runoff with a primary SEM. A primary SEM is just something like a wet pond, or wetland, or bioretention area that has more treatment value than a dry pond or a grass whale. Also, with these updated rules, they're allowing projects to do ponds off-site, so they're allowing a regional pond to be shared with developments, or they're also allowing, if there's not enough room on a particular site, to be treated somewhere else. I don't know how often we'll see that, because we, with the watershed protection rules and our detention rules, we require stormwater to be done on individual developed sites. So this, that may not come into play very often. Anything that is low density, under the 24%, shall meet the design standards set by the state. M is basically just saying there are a few different ways that they can reduce export of nitrogen through either stormwater runoff controls, an approved regional stormwater runoff control measure, or through the acquisition of nutrient offset credits, or a collection of these items. N is something the town's already doing. Again, the state just wanted us to put this all in the ordinance, so that it was all listed out. But nutrient offset credits shall be acquired prior to obtaining a building permit for a development. Currently, right now, when a plan is approved, I will send a letter to the developer, letting them know how much nutrient offset credits they need to purchase. When I receive that receipt from the mitigation bank or the state, I let planning or, and the building inspections know that we've received that documentation, and they've paid, and they can issue the building permit. O is not changing. That's, except in certain situations, stormwater detention will be required on new development. The design standard for detention will be based on the 1, 10, 25-year storm events, and then in some cases, the 100-year. So the next two slides will go over the enforcement language that we've added. So 7.6.1 talks about complaints. So the complaints can either be generated by us doing an inspection on a property, or upon receipt of an oral or written or otherwise type of complaint. The procedure for discovery of the violation, and then, so I will issue a written notice of violation, and then indicate the nature of the violation, ordering the action necessary to correct it, associated deadlines and penalties, and advising that the order may be appealed to the Board of Adjustment. If the property owner or responsible entity does not appeal and fails to correct the violation, or if the property owner or responsible entity fails to correct the violation after a final Board of Adjustment decision, upholding the notice of violation, the property owner or responsible entity shall be subject to such remedies as the following slide. So we will name the persons liable. The violation shall be subject to a civil penalty of $100 per violation. Each violation continues, each day the violation continues will be considered a separate offense. And then D basically says we can also use other tools in our toolbox, so we can use, we can revoke the permit, or we can issue a stop work order, or we can go back to that nuisance language as well. We can use any one or a combination of all of this to enforce the stormwater program. So with that, staff recommends that council consider a motion to forward this case to the Planning Commission for Consistency Review and Recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks so much, a thorough report. So I'll see if counsel has any questions. I'll start with Mr. Matthews. Okay, Mr. Singleton.
I appreciate the information, and thank you for condensing all the numerous pages in here into your presentation.
It's a big document.
I did scan through some of that, and, you know, your presentation, thank you. And I'm glad we're staying up to date on this. We were, the town was up to date on starting stormwater enforcement many years ago, and I appreciate your work and continue with that.
Okay, Ms. Behringer, anything?
I go the same. I appreciate your hard work. I know that was not something that passed by real quickly. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
A quick question on the enforcement. Was that a change that came to us in statute form, and we're adding it, or is that, it's wholly new?
This is wholly new that Terry has proposed. Yeah, just basically because we don't have a good enforcement mechanism right now.
So if I may, counsel, you may recall the Sneedon case, where the pond had not been maintained for several years. Our nuisance ordinance really addresses imminent harm to public health, safety, and welfare, so it was not the best tool, and it was challenged in court. We were able to settle that case, but this parallels more of the zoning and other land development enforcement practices and options, so that we'll have a consistent type of approach, and that we can take action on failure to maintain or failure to have things inspected, rather than having to wait till there is a imminent breach or a potential, you know, impact on downstream property owners.
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so is there a person here this evening who wishes to speak to this issue, came for that purpose? Okay, seeing and hearing none. I'm going to close a public, was there any other testimony at all?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I'll close the public hearing and ask counsel either for a motion, or if there's something you want to discuss amongst yourselves to clarify anything, but I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved the motion. I've moved that zoning text amendment, ZTA 23-01, be referred to the Planning Commission for Consistency Review and Recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Motion properly made by Mr. Vance and submitted by Ms. Behringer. Manners properly before you. Counsel, if you favor this motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, no. And there is none. Okay, thank you so much for your good report. Now we'll go to item two, under Public Hearings, and I believe Ms. Harris will be presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of counsel. I will be presenting case CZMP 2208, Gatsby Station. This is a Tier 2 conditional rezoning request, which is a rezoning request which requires a master plan. General case information, the applicant is Brenda Vega of Withers-Ravenel. The owners are various members of the Bailey family, as well as Patrick Roberts and Donald Lee Burgus. The request is to rezone 60.6925 acres from Wake County Residential R30 to multifamily 1 conditional MF1C264, which would be adopted as MFA under the new UDO that was adopted last July, for the development of a residential community not to exceed 2.8 dwelling units an acre. Zoning conditions are proposed that restrict the range of uses to only townhomes and residential cluster, and architectural and other conditions are also proposed. Because this is a Wake County residential zoning project, it would also be required to annex into the Town of Garner, which would be timed with the final town council action date for this matter. So the site location, it is located just south of the edge of Auburn, off of Rock Quarry Road. To the south, there is the two county subdivisions, the Stony Creek subdivision and the Hialee County subdivision. These are both single-family residential. It is also in close proximity to the future 540 corridor, which will come through by Rock Quarry Road and US 70, Hialee East. Here is a street view, looking at the site from... Here is a street view looking at the site from Rock Quarry Road and the adjacent zoning and land use. So to the north of the site is the Edge of Auburn subdivision, which came through several years ago as a PUD rezoning. There is also the Wake County residential subdivisions, which I mentioned previously, and then to the west is undeveloped and single-family lots, and those are zoned RA. So the zoning history, some of the most significant cases in the area would be the Edge of Auburn rezoning, which I mentioned came in as a PRD. So that was approved at rezoning for the development of about 800 residential units. And then also recently, I believe in January, you passed the Brunette Farms rezoning for the development of townhomes and apartments. So the Wake County Residential R30 district allows for single-family lots of at least 30,000 square feet or .69 acres, and allows for a density of 1.45 acres units per acre. Under this zoning, the site could accommodate approximately 62 single-family lots, and that's accounting for 20% site area for streets, roads, and 10% for open space. So the applicant has proposed a list of conditions, and so they have proposed limiting the uses to only residential cluster and townhouse. The maximum density would not exceed 2.8 dwelling units per acre, and at a minimum, 45% of the dwelling units will be single-family detached. They have also proposed a number of architectural conditions, including siding materials, which may include hardy plank, vinyl, or masonry. Any vinyl siding would be a minimum of .045 inch thickness. If masonry is not the predominant first-floor finish, greater than 50%, then the front elevation will have at least two types of siding, such as lap and shake or board and batten. All garage doors will have windows, and townhome buildings will incorporate variations in garage doors, so that there is not more than two units in a row with the same combination of color or pattern, to allow for a little bit more variation. All residential building foundations will have an exposed height of at least 12 inches along the front and sides, and will be finished with a masonry product. And exposed foundations of less than 12 inches are allowed in the rear but must be painted, textured, with parjing and painted. All single-family homes will have an outdoor patio deck or screened-in porch of at least 100 square feet, or a sunroom of at least 100 square feet, and the townhomes will have an outdoor patio deck or screened-in porch of at least 80 square feet. All single-family homes will have at least one variation in pitch or plane of the front-facing roofline. If dormers are utilized, each dormer shall count as one variation. All townhomes will incorporate at least one variation per townhome unit in the pitch or plane of the front-facing roofline, and if dormers are utilized, they will also count as a variation for the townhomes. All townhome buildings will incorporate a horizontal offset of at least two feet along the front and rear facade, with two feet offsetting occurring every two units at a minimum. All residential dwelling units will include at least one window along the first floor and front facade, and have a front door with a transom window and side light treatment. And the front door of all residential dwelling units shall not be recessed any more than four feet from the primary facade of the dwelling, not including the garage. All dwelling units will have a covered front porch or a covered stoop of at least 20 square feet, and all single-family and townhouse buildings will have at least one window on both sides of a habitable floor, set in trim of at least one by four. All townhome buildings shall have a trim board along with both side elevations at the attic floor with a different side pattern above, or at least one vent decorative or functional along each gable. Any cantilevered projection will have cosmetic brackets or shelf supports, and any trash or recycling receptacles which are intended to be stored outside must be screened from the view from the public right-of-way or alley. They are also proposing a six-foot-wide paved nature trail that would be provided throughout the community, which would tie into the various amenity areas, and a six-foot-wide sidewalk in general conformance with the master plan, which the final location would be figured out at the time of subdivision plan upon review and approval by town staff. And they are providing a 30-foot-wide public greenway easement, which would be for a potential future connection into the northwest-east corner of the site, and it's shown on the master plan. So there was a neighborhood meeting. Staff identified 46 properties within the 300-foot notification radius, which was the rule at the time of application, and provided the owner with the list for first-class mail notices. It was held on April 20, 2022, and approximately 13 people were in attendance. They are highlighted below. And as I said, the site area is 60.925 acres, give or take. Generally, in the MF1 district, the first unit requires 6,000 square feet for development, and then any additional unit would require 4,500 square feet. And then in the residential cluster option of MF1, development area is limited to six dwelling units an acre. The master plan here proposes 167 units, 80 single-family town cluster units, and 87 townhouse units, so well below the MF1 provisions of what they're allowed. The townhomes have a minimum lot width of 18 feet, a front setback of 15 feet if rear garage access, or 25 feet if front garage access, a side setback of 15 feet, a rear setback of 25 feet, and a building separation of 30 feet or the triangulation method. And the single-family detached has a minimum lot width of 50 feet with a front setback of 20 feet and a side setback of seven and a half feet. There is a provision in the old ordinance that allows for side setbacks to be reduced to five feet if buildings are shown on the preliminary subdivision plot. The rear setback would be 15 feet, and the corner side setback would be 15 feet. Again, there is a provision in the old ordinance to allow that to be reduced to 10 feet if the building footprint is shown on the preliminary subdivision plot. So here is the master plan, and let's see if I can get my arrow here. So there is the six-foot-wide nature trail, which I mentioned in the zoning conditions, which ties into a six-foot-wide sidewalk, which is highlighted here in red and goes throughout the site connecting these various pocket parks. They are proposing a dog park along with some exercise stations along their trail, a more naturalistic, open-space area, and then some amenitized pocket parks, including benches, trash cans, and supplemental landscaping. The 30-foot easement for a potential future greenway connection. So there is one located just south of this group of townhomes here, and then also in the northwest corner tying into Edge of Auburn. There is a 75-foot gas easement along the north edge between Edge of Auburn and Gatsby Station. And then here would be the rear-loaded townhome units, the mail kiosk, and then the single-family home units. There is a buffered stream which runs across most of the site, so you can see along the property line here to the west, or to the east, and then also going through the central portion of the site with several fingers that branch off, and then in the southernmost region here. Traffic and access, this project will have about 860 feet along Rock Quarry Road, with two future interchanges on the horizon. Existing traffic patterns will likely change, however, the traffic count for the area for the last several years, you can see in 2019, it was 6,496, and then 2021, 6,417, so staying fairly consistent in the last four years. A TIA was required, and the NC DOT Congestion Management has made the following recommendations: 50 feet of southbound turn lane off of Rock Quarry Road into Site Access 1, and 50 feet of southbound left turn lane into Site Access 2, as well as striping for a 50-foot northbound right turn lane off of Rock Quarry Road into Site Access 2. The tree canopy cover is a sliding scale of 18 to 20%, which was the rule at the time of smittle. 15.9% of this will be met through tree preservation, and then with the supplemental landscaping and replanting, they will meet the 18.5% requirement. There is a perimeter buffer along the entirety of the project, and that northern buffer is adjacent to the 75-foot utility easement. And then, as I mentioned, there is the buffered streams that run throughout the central and edges of the property. There is also a street buffer required along Rock Quarry Road, which would be an undisturbed buffer except for infrastructure crossings to be supplemented as needed, and street trees would be provided approximately every 40 feet along all roadways. For the parks and open space, they are required to have 15.23 acres, and they are proposed to have an excess of 25%. Any open space will be owned and maintained by the HOA, and these spaces consist of a riparian buffer and the four amenity areas and pocket parks, including dog park, paved nature trail, and passive open space. There are no FEMA-designated fub planes, however, there is a buffered stream and wetlands located throughout the site, and so those are, as I mentioned, running through with several fingers branching off. Service for the water and sewer will be provided by City of Raleigh, and water will connect to and be extended from the existing lines in Rock Quarry Road, as well as tie into the waterline stub that was provided by Edge of Auburn at the northern portion of the site. The sewer will tie into the sanitary sewer stub that was provided by Edge of Auburn, and will be extended to adjacent and upstream properties per Raleigh Water Policy. Lighting for the streets will meet the UDO, stormwater management devices will meet the UDO, and water lines and hydrant spacing required to meet the Garner Fire and Raleigh Codes and regulations, and all landscaping and parking will be re-verified at subdivision site plan time. So the next steps for a Conditional Two rezoning, the project would be referred to Planning Commission to determine consistency before coming back to you for final action for reasonableness. So tonight's recommendation is that, once town council has heard comments, concerns, and questions from the general public, that the Conditional zoning request, CZMP 2208, be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency. I will put the master plan back up for your reference.
Okay, ready for questions? Ms. Singleton, do you have anything?
I have a question for the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Not this time.
Anything? Mr. Dellinger?
Question on the perimeter buffer in your report, and in the packet it says it's a 20-foot buffer, but when I referenced the old UDO for cluster development for M1, it's a 30-foot buffer where there are no land-disturbing activities. And the master plan that's in our packet too, it's indicated as a 30-foot buffer. So I'm just curious, which one's correct, and like, is it undisturbed, or is it a disturbed buffer?
It would be required to follow the UDO, so anything that is inconsistent can be corrected before Planning Commission, but the more strict whatever's in the UDO, so the 30 feet, would be correct.
And what definition do we use for, you know, land-disturbing activities? And I saw our definition in the UDO, but it wasn't clear. It doesn't seem to necessarily mean the same thing as undisturbed, so what's the threshold there?
No landscape or vegetation. Okay, so I think the limit would be grading unless there's no landscape or vegetation. Jeff might be able to speak to that more clearly. He's looking up the definition now.
Yeah, I can isolate it. It's like, it doesn't say undisturbed there, but it indicates that you can't just, I'll let him reference it.
Yeah, any interpretation at the end would come down to Planning Director, so I'd have to defer to Jeff.
Ms. Vance?
No questions at this time.
Okay. I believe everybody's had a chance to question here. We'll hear from the applicant now, is that correct? Ms. Harris?
I believe the applicant is here to answer questions, if you have any.
Okay. If you would, please step forward and give us your name and address, sir.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Brad Hart. I'm with Withers Ravenel Incorporated, 115 McKenan Drive, Cary, North Carolina. I'm a registered professional engineer and senior project manager for Withers Ravenel, and also here in attendance this evening on our project team are Jennifer Scott and Todd Alsop with the developer, and also Brenda Vega with Withers Ravenel, and Brittany Chase with Exalt Engineering, the transportation consultant. So yeah, if you guys want to jump in with questions, that's great. If there's any other detail or high points of the project you'd like us to address, I'm glad to do that as well.
Okay, why don't we do that at this time? And let's see, I'll start with Ms. Behringer this time, if she has any.
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, go to my left to Mr. Singleton.
Yes, Mr. Hart, there's, in the conditions, our item four, I talked about vinyl siding being included as a siding material. We have discouraged developers from that. Our staff, I emailed them today, and Mr. Treesenberg said back in the very first comments, back to y'all, permission for vinyl siding is a nonstarter, please consider removal. So if the staff asked for it to be removed, how come it hadn't been removed?
Well, that's a good question, and it by no means is out of disrespect, and what I'd like to do is maybe defer that to Todd Alsop with the developer, who's also, you know, put a similar builder team on the project to address that.
Okay, that's fine.
Todd, you want to come up? I'll stand by and address other stuff.
Good evening, sir.
Todd Alsop, 2046 Energy Drive, I'm with the developer. We are not opposed to the siding. We were just looking at some of the other neighborhood, the Edge of Auburn was allowed to go forward with the vinyl siding. You know, in this day and age, there's a lot of pressure on everybody from the affordability standpoint, to try to keep things, the prices in line, but if it is a nonstart, I mean, if it has to be hardy plank, then, you know, we will allow, you know, we'll move forward in that direction. We just wanted to present the case from the affordability, because going to the hardy, to the, from vinyl to hardy, typically from the building standpoint, on a townhome, will add about $10,000 worth of cost, and on a typical single-family, you're talking $20,000 to $25,000 additional cost. So I just wanted to present that, but if it's something that the town wants, then we'll definitely consider it.
The project should have been approved lately.
I'm sorry?
Or approved without vinyl siding. Vinyl's used for trim and for windows, but not as a primary siding.
Okay.
So I think that it's listed as a nonstarter, so it's still a nonstarter.
Very good.
And I can speak to a hardy plank. Our house was built in 96, and we have never, ever painted or touched it. So it is outstanding product, I can say that. Trim's a different story, but the product is good, y'all already know that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Matthews, I give you a chance.
Mr. Singleton will hit right on it.
Okay, you're good. All right, I'll go to Mr. Vance.
Yes, has a traffic impact analysis been completed for this project yet?
Yes, sir, it has, and our transportation consultant is also here and can speak to the details if needed, but I'll cut to the chase. It has, and it's been reviewed by NC DOT, and we've agreed to their recommendations, which include auxiliary turn lanes at both of the site entrances, and address our, you know, separate ingress and egress lanes from the project. It did not, DOT did not recommend any additional off-site improvements at the intersections to the south or north, mainly because those are already committed by other developments, mostly Edge of Auburn. And however, if for some reason some of those committed elements by others were not completed at the time that we did our project, then that would have to be reevaluated, and we would probably have to do them. But at this time, it's just auxiliary turn lanes at the two site entrances.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dellinger?
I have two questions. One is more of an observation, there seemed to be a missed opportunity for the connectivity of the center part of the development to the northern amenity area. the connectivity of the center part of the development to the northern amenity area. It's about a third of a mile to walk from the center part. You've got, already got trails right in the middle.
Right.
Which is smart, but then you have to walk all the way around to get to that northern amenity area. I think it would, it, it could be shifted around to move, maybe this, get rid of this pocket park down at the bottom even, but having that direct access and losing one of those lots right in there would add to the pedestrian flow of, of the development. That's just a recommendation. I mean, there's a lot of connectivity and a lot of preserved area. That's just, again, a recommendation. My other question is a curiosity question, and it's that connected road at the top that is about two tenths of a mile long to serve.
Right.
Ten, and I'm curious as to why that road's in there that way, when it seems like there'd be a, a more efficient connection. I drove out there and they haven't, they're moving dirt, but, and they're putting up some houses.
Right.
But there seem to be, seems a long way to go to make that connection, so can you?
Yeah, yeah, ab- absolutely. And if it's okay, I'll address that last comment first about the road connection. Um, so we, we completely a- agree with you that it seems like an odd and circuitous route to connect to Edge of Auburn. Um, the reason that it's configured that way is the approved plans for Edge of Auburn already, you know, provided the stub at that location that we connect to that has the bulb where it turns 90 degrees. So we had to connect at that location and only that location, and we couldn't extend it just like straight towards the middle of the site, because if you'll see there, it would literally cross two different streams right next to each other. Um, and it, it's with the, with our already having one string crossing to permit, which ties into your other question, for the trail connection towards the Edge of Auburn, and with our roadway connection on, um, or excuse me, the roadway crossing across the stream towards the eastern portion of the site, um, we're confident that extending that road straight, we would have loved to, to have done it as well, because it's, it's less road to build. We've got a lot of road there with no lot frontage on it. Um, but it's basically unpermissible to have, um, can't say that as a blanket statement, but we feel that it is, to have three string crossings for a project where technically we only need one. So we commiserated a good bit on how to look at that and we looked at other options and, and, um, so it looks awkward, but, um, it, it sort of feels like we, we got left with a stub location that couldn't logically be extended straight.
Yeah, and it's something you've got to build. There's another project that similarly has this long road in the middle of a neighborhood that you, the developer has to build and then we have to maintain.
Right, u- understood, understood. We, we would have much rather run it straight through there, we really would have.
And, yeah, I did have a third. And the easements for the greenway, why are there only easements and not the, just going ahead and constructing out those greenway paths?
No, good, good question. Um, it was, so on, on the, uh, the town's, uh, greenway plan, it didn't have any specific greenway quarters identified directly in this site, and, uh, Edge of Auburn doesn't have a greenway in that location on their site to tie to, but throughout the process of, of review with staff, um, you know, staff indicated that in the future, you know, while there's really not a greenway to, a physical greenway to connect to in Edge of Auburn, that maybe a plan could be come up with to connect there. So we were asked to provide an easement at, and, uh, public easement at that location, but if, if we were to build the trail, it wouldn't, you know, there's not anything to connect to on the receiving end. Um, so it was really just a provision for the future, but there, there was no opposition to building a short-run a trail. Um, but back to your question of the pedestrian string crossings in the central area up there in the natural open space area. So that also, you know, had been something discussed during staff review, and, you know, if you'll notice, we have on, towards the northwestern corner of the site, we have a trail connection that sort of runs along the upper tip of that string buffer and rings around the corner of it. It's not really a string crossing, but it, it impacts some of the string buffer that requires permitting. The other crossing of the stream towards the bulb closer to Edge of Auburn, well, that one is there because I think with staff, they really wanted to be able to get a connection to Edge of Auburn, um, whether it be from sidewalk trail that could readily access that, that northern open space area. And really, we're looking at, w- we've already got, you know, a roadway string, wetland, impact crossing, and a pedestrian string crossing that need to be permitted, and is it justifiable from the permitting agencies to have, um, you know, a, an additional crossing that's technically not required for connectivity, um, but for pedestrian trail? So it, I certainly get your point about the central part of the site not having as direct of a route to that, um, area, but we do have side path along that area with it. So yeah, it, it, you know, you would have to walk around a little bit, but, but it wasn't that we just didn't want to, you know, pay for a, a couple hundred feet of extra trail.
And I, I appreciate all the thought that went into it. I'd be more concerned for the residents of my own development getting access to the
Right.
area there and swapping that trail for Edge of Auburn people to come in than for the people in your neighborhood to get to what's part of their neighborhood. So I'd, if, all things being equal, I think swapping that would make sense, but...
And we would be, I don't think we would be opposed to that. I think if we could, um, from the development team and, you know, from an engineering perspective, if we could not have the, the, the crossing that's more direct towards Edge of Auburn and just had one and made it more line up with that open space corridor through the, I think we could certainly do that. Our concern is being able to have two of them. You could still get to Edge of Auburn, but then that would be the route where you'd need to follow the, the roadway. So I think, um, we would be agreeable to swapping it if it were a swap. I think it would get difficult to try to just simply add another one.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for this gentleman? Anybody here, here? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else, um, planning to, uh, speak for the applicant? Okay, I believe there are none. This is a public hearing, so are there persons, uh, who are here this evening who wish to speak to this issue? Now would be your opportunity to do that. Okay, seeing and hearing none. Counsel, do you have any other questions or comments? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing otherwise. Okay. All right, I declare the public hearing is, um, is closed and, uh, you see the recommended motion there to refer this matter to the Planning Commission.
May I move the motion? I move that conditional rezoning request CZ MP 22-08 be referred to the Planning Commission for plan consistency review and recommendation.
Okay, motion properly made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Behringer, second to the motion. Counsel, I call for a vote. If you favor the motion before you, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Is there opposition, vote no? And there is none, so this matter will be referred to the Planning Commission and then come back to this council per policy. Thank you again, Ms. Harris, for your good presentation. Okay, uh, the next item of business is, I believe, number three on my list. Is Ms. Jones here or she, who is presenting?
That was continued.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I had that marked through, then I didn't. I guess that's all of our public hearing business. Okay. All right, um, thank you all. We will move then to the next item of business, which is, uh, committee reports, if there are any.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to give an update on the HR, the Human Resource Committee. Uh, we're in the process of coordinating, uh, to look at the current vacancies that are within the various boards and commissions and looking at, uh, the process of filling those in, in the near future. And we'll be coming back to you on a date to be determined with, uh, recommendations, but that is yet to be determined when.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Vance, and we'll look forward to, um, the work of your committee and...
Yes, and that's Mr. Dillinger and I for those who don't know.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Manager, I believe we will hear from you at this time.
All right, Mayor, Town Council, I'm going to turn the first item, Talk of the Town, over to Ms. Miller, and she will, um, give you an update on that report that's in the back of your agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I just want to briefly go over the February edition of Talk of the Town report. Um, we've got several items that are follow-up items from January's meeting, including some litter removal, um, pothole repairs, and streetlight repairs. And so we had a great presentation of the reaccreditation of our Public Works Department this evening, and you can see how busy they've been with some of the, um, repairs and removal across the town. So, um, very pleased that they were able to take care of some of those issues and some are still in progress. I just wanted to highlight that for you. Um, in addition to, um, the items on the front page, just want to remind council and the public that the council's planning retreat is scheduled for this week on the 23rd and 24th, Thursday and Friday, and we're going to be, um, holding the council retreat upstairs in the training room. So, um, we'll have coffee and refreshments starting at 8:30, and then we'll actually start the retreat agendas at 9:00 AM on both days. The final item I wanted to bring to your attention is our monthly analytics from the Garner Info app. We provide this every month to council. We had 37 total requests from January 7th to February 10th. As you can see at the top of the list, just like we talked about, um, some of the work that Public Works has been doing, uh, litter pickup and pothole or pavement repair sort of topped the list for the last 30 days. And 89% of those requests that have come in through the Garner Info app have been either completed or in progress in some way, and, um, our Public Works and our inspections Department have been very busy taking care of or addressing about 89% of those, uh, requests that have come in over the last 30 days. So those are a few highlights from this month's report. Happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Miller. Uh, council members, any questions for Ms. Miller to my left? Anything? To my right, any questions? Okay, none? All right, Mr. Manager, are you still up?
I'll go through, um, a coup- a few announcements just to let you know what's going on here in the near future. Um, so tomorrow we will have the, uh, the CLU Character and Land Use Elements Workshop, and that will be at the Garner Recreation Center from noon to 6:00, and that will be a, a drop-in format and provide information and, um, ask for input, public input on the CLU initiative. Uh, also, we have the Showcase of Talent, which is Saturday, uh, at the GPAC, Garner Performing Arts Center. Uh, there are free shows, one will be at 3:00 o'clock and the other will be at 7:00 PM, and it will showcase local Garner talent in various, um, artistic forms. And we will also have, uh, a open public house workshop of the draft pedestrian plan at White Deer Park Nature Center on March the 9th, from 4:30 to 6:30. Uh, and there'll be more of, of that upcoming event on garnernc.gov. And just to reiterate, um, our meeting changes, and I think I see a discrepancy here that we might need to work out. Let me see, um... Yeah, so starting March the 6th, we will start our 6:00 meetings, and then April 4th, uh, we will start with Tuesday meetings. We will eliminate the, the Monday, the first Monday of the month meeting and go to Tuesday meetings. Uh, there are a couple occasions where we might revert to other days, but for the most part, the meetings will happen on Tuesdays at 6:00 PM. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the manager?
One other, one other quick reminder, uh, there will not be a February work session due to us having a two-day retreat.
Right. Any questions for the manager? Okay, seeing and hearing none, then we will move, I believe, to the attorney reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had prepared a legal opinion regarding the Copper Ridge project, um, and the road connections of Hurst Drive and Canaskis Road, and I heard back from some of the council members as to whether it would be appropriate to release that to the Planning Commission in public before it returns to the Planning Commission for the consistency review. So I just wanted to make sure that I had the consensus of council to, to go ahead and release that at the appropriate time.
Hey, counsel, just a thumbs up there. I know, uh, I saw a couple of responses via email, I believe, so...
No, I will give the qualifier that depending on what DEQ does, it may get resolve, uh, it may get revised, um, in accordance with, with the determination from, uh, the state is regarding stream crossings, like you heard in the previous project.
Okay, but you're voting to go ahead and release this as a public document? That's all? Okay.
Thank you. That would be my only report tonight.
Okay, thank you so, so much, Ms. Jones. Okay, we'll go to, uh, council reports, and, um, I'll start, um, right down here with Mr. Vance, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have several items. One pertains to, uh, the, at the intersection of Smith Drive and New Rand Road, uh, tractor-trailers who are coming off of New Rand Road onto Smith Drive are cutting that, that tight little intersection, are pretty close, causing damage to the drainage, uh, there, which is causing flooding. And, uh, I know it's been talked about with Public Works, we just want to get a status as to, uh, if that's being repaired and looked at. That is a low area, uh, and it is susceptible to, to flooding already. Uh, the, the next thing is that in reference to, uh, the Jackie Johns Park, I'd like to get a status or a report on the repair of the facilities there, the restroom facilities there as well.
I think somebody...
Ms. Miller can give you a report on it.
The email, the email that Mr. Jones responded. Did you read the email from Mr. Jones? He responded to that.
Oh, I, I have not seen that.
Okay.
But just to provide an update to council, um, Mr. Jones did provide an update. So we have been in the works of trying to get that facility repaired. Unfortunately, the first contractor that we had hired and got almost to the completion point of, um, getting the contract completed, we weren't able to come to agreement on some of the terms, so we had to go back out and find another contractor. We're in the process of finalizing that now, and once that contract gets finalized, we then can do the repairs. And so we've asked Public Works team to go out to the, to the restroom area there and make sure everything's secured and safe until those repairs can be done, but they should be done here shortly.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That is it for right now.
Okay, Mr. Dillinger, uh, report.
Yeah, some comments related to, uh, our resident Jake who spoke earlier, and we, we do have a lot more residents in, coming into North Garner along that corridor. Um, we have a lot of employees and facilities in that part of town. We've got the rec center, we've got GPAC, we've got our downtown development manager, um, we've got the senior center, and, you know, I, when I was watching on the news and, and watching that unfold, I was thinking about, uh, if there were something to happen, what's the evacuation plan? We've got streets up there, Cedar, Center, Harper, Penny, that don't have back exits. How would we get people out? Um, so I just kind of, I think his point was, eh, to the manager's point of, we have a strategy for when something happens, is to be more proactive about preventing something from happening by getting information. And I think there are a lot of municipalities in the county that would feel the same, they have the same risks, um, that we do with having that. And so I think, uh, you know, a little additional leadership from Garner around getting some of this information or trying to facilitate, uh, more transparency on maintenance schedules. What's on these, you know, freight trains that are coming through town would be appreciated by everyone in the county, um, because you don't think it's going to happen, and then by the time it happens, it's too late. And we'd like to know that we have a plan, our employees are prepared to help residents out of the rec center and stuff like that, you know, and not, not know what to do. So I think we can, there's room for us to be more proactive, I think, so I just put that on the table for us to think about over, you know, the next week and the retreat and stuff. And like you said, put, um, public safety first, um, is always what we try to do, so... And also, there may be, I don't know what NC Rail's role is, but having them potentially as someone who could either educate us or partner with us for advocacy, um, I think, you know, it... you know, it, it, you never think it's gonna happen, and when it happens, it's, it's too late, and something like that happening in Garner could poison our whole town, I mean, literally, so, that's all.
Just a, just a quick comment, and I share your concerns, um, and I'm, I think I know the answer to this, but I guess, uh, the, um, freight companies that, uh, use that railroad track out there, they're not obligated, I suppose, to inform towns along their route when they're, or maybe they do it on a routine basis, have these, these chemicals that this gentleman talked about, that they are carrying in their, um, in their cars. Do, do, do we even know when those come through, or do we ever hear from the railroad? We don't have any, there's no obligation as far as we know. But at any rate, I mean, to me, that's, that's just kind of an informational thing that would be preferable to know, but, uh, I agree, all it takes is, is one terrible tragedy like this that can really do lots of damage, both physical and psychological, and a lot of other ways, economic as well. So, uh, okay, thank you, Mr. Dillinger.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, one more thing, I apologize. And during the last meeting, I requested, uh, review of the timing for the, of the light at the 70 New Rand Road intersection. Has there been any update on that, the timing piece, or the weekend for that particular light?
Not a whole lot of update, it probably took me longer to get up here than talk, but, um, I spoke to the Division Traffic Engineers Office about that, and they're taking a look at it. I think their Division Traffic Engineer is out on maternity leave, so the deputy is covering, and she said she's a little behind on checking all these things, but they did respond and said that they're evaluating it, and thank you for the, bringing it to their attention, so...
Yeah.
We'll keep following up with them and see what they find out.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll go this way, Mr. Singleton? Well, excuse me, go ahead, sorry. I was gonna come back.
To Mr. Dillinger's point, I, I know that the railroad has never been, um, quick to partner with or work with us, but we have to start somewhere, and maybe if we start the conversations, we can move along as far as, say, new safety precautions being put in place that, that we don't have now. It's one of those things that has presented itself, and, um, and we have an opportunity to follow up and, and be good stewards of the town that we live in, so that's one thing. Um, second, to Mr. Hodges, the, uh, buil, business on Garner Road that has the granite, marble slabs, whatever they are, they're still, the, the pieces are still being left out in front of the building, uh, on nights and weekends, it's, it's getting worse, so if we could look into that. Uh, also, there is a junk car at the property of 116 New Rand Road, uh, it looks like it's been there decades, not years, it's, uh, paint's missing from it, and, um, it'd be nice to not have to, to look at that. Um, parking lot at Timber Crossing, I know that's a private property, but my goodness gracious, what do we need to do to get the owner to repair that parking lot? There's a huge pothole right in front of the post office, and, uh, somebody almost hit my car today trying to avoid hitting the pothole. So what do we, just keep, continue to call?
It was in the report that Public Co, Public Works has already contacted the owner and is requir, requesting them to repair the potholes as soon as possible, it was in our Talk of the Town report.
Well, I know that, but if they don't do it in a reasonable amount of time, then what is our next step?
Private property.
It's in our town.
It's also private property.
Tell that to somebody.
Somebody has a pothole in the middle of their, their driveway, you can't make them go fix it. I agree with you, but I'm, you know, I mean, that parking lot has had pothole problems for years.
Well, this is the worst one I've ever seen over there.
It's a pretty big one, it could lose a small car in it.
Yeah.
It is bad.
And somebody could get hurt, and then there's another problem.
They could fall into it.
Yes.
So, to the extent that, um, the parking lot is covered by the site plan, we'll have to do some research as to when it was approved and what the maintenance standards were, there might be some possibility of UDO enforcement, um, if they fail to correct that, because although it is private property, it is inviting the public on, um, I don't think our nuisance ordinance, um, short of a sinkhole, would, would address this, but we can look into, to what those options are, but it, it will, as you may recall from the stormwater case, it depends on what the requirements were when the, um, development was approved.
That was the late eight, or late eighties, early nineties, it's been there a long time.
But it still bears looking at, so thank you. And the last thing is that, uh, the white concrete building at the off-ramp off of 40 onto Jones Sausage Road, there's still all that trash in the yard. I know that we've, we're on a contractor's list somewhere to get that work done, it wouldn't take all that long time to get it done. Can we possibly call him and encourage him either to move it up on the list, or at the very least to paint over the tagging that's there, the gang tagging that's there?
We'll check on the schedule and see if we can get it done any sooner.
You know, that old thing about the squeaky wheel gets the grease, we're, you know, I know we're hearing all the time that, uh, there's a lot to be done, there's a shortage of this, there's a shortage of that, and I believe that, but I also know that the more noise you make, the sooner something gets done. Thank you.
Okay, now, Ms. Singleton, recognize you, sir?
Yes, and regards to what Mr. Dillinger wrote up, I don't, and what our gentleman speaker had tonight, I don't disagree with anything you said, but until the state and more appropriately the federal government gets off the schneid and makes them do things, it ain't gonna happen. Nothing will happen, well, nothing will change, so I would suggest the next time we see Representative Nichols and Representative, uh, Ross, that we ask them, 'cause that's where it's got to start with Congress, 'cause heck, they haven't reported anything about, they wanted to know how. I mean, they finally did, at least what the chemical was, but what have they done? Very little or nothing.
And that's why I said, I think, if we, eh, put our minds together and get a letter and get us signed on, and maybe other municipalities in the county, and go to our representatives in the state and say, "Hey, this is a dangerous..."
I think how many towns from here to Moorhead, where the, you know, this railroad goes straight to Moorhead, where it picks up a lot of chemicals, but, uh, I mean, think all the towns it goes through, just starting right there with them, and Moorhead and head this way, so, all good points. Uh, report up, uh, this is a pothole, it's off the road, it's on Garner Road, heading east, after you pass New Rand Road, before you get to the ready-mix concrete on the right, or on the south side, there is a massive hole, uh, from truck traffic that's on the side, that, uh, it's a gin dandy, if you hit it with something, I saw a trooper go through it, and it almost, he almost lost control of the car, I know where he was, right off the side of the road, but it's that big. Uh, and again, between New Rand Road and ready-mix, East Garner Road hitting east, it's on the south side on the right, you can't miss it.
Okay.
That's another one you could look, you could lose a car in, too. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Matthews, your chance, sir?
Yes, sir. Uh, I know a lot of fiber's been put down all over Garner, and a lot of yards have been torn up, and roads, and it's, it's wound up being a big mess, and I'm getting inundated with calls, and, uh, is the town gonna make them, make it right, or clean up the mess, and where everybody's landscaping, they've gone and just trashed it. Uh, any updates on when this is gonna be concluded, and, and how much, uh, authority we have to make them go back and fix these yards and driveways that they've disrupted tremendously? And if you know what I'm talking about, that's right around town, you'll see it, follow the wheat straw.
Leah can give some specifics on the work we're doing to approve, um, the, the particular permits, if, if we need to. Um, we have had several instances, others, um, citizens complaining to us, and just frustration that staff has had with some things, so I did contact our governmental affairs representative for, um, one of the utility companies that we think is probably doing the most installs today, and, um, have, have asked her for a meeting so that we can talk about those things. In many cases, though, uh, most of that work is being done in the right-of-way, um, and so it often appears to be people's yards, but it's not their yards if it's being in the right-of-way, so there's sort of a challenge between, you know, whether there's a requirement to go back, if there's, if there's infrastructure that's damaged, we definitely can work on getting that replaced, and we've done that in several instances, and, uh, Ms. Harrison can provide some additional information.
Sure. Yes, we know, it's, it's a mess all over, um, we have looked at a lot of, of fiber permits lately, so they have been very responsive to fixing issues as they come up. The problem is, when you have a company who's very responsive, but they have a lot of contractors working for them, right, so it's kind of them trying to get with the contractors to repair things. Um, in general, they are supposed to leave things the way that they found them, within reason, so if it's grassed, it should be seeded at the end, it should be put back in place. Um, they have kind of a phased approach, and if you have areas that you see regularly, you'll probably notice that, it's like one, on one week, they'll have the equipment out there, boring, to, to lay the initial line, and then it might be, a few weeks later, they come back and have someone actually putting the fiber through the conduit, so there's some phasing, which makes it feel like it takes longer at all of these locations than the actual work takes, but, um, we have a meeting with them again this week, actually, with the, the primary fiber installer these days, um, and we have kind of reiterated to them that we know it's their contractor, and they have been responsive, but we need them to do their part to, to rein in the messes that they're making. Ultimately, our, I guess, final discretion would be to stop approving permits for them. The catch on that is DOT can still approve the permits in their right-of-way, so it won't really get it out of the town completely, and I don't know that that's the goal, uh, but we have let them know that if, if this is moving too fast, and that's why we can't keep up, then we will certainly slow down on improving encroachment permits for them, so that we can get the issues taken care of.
Who is it?
Sure.
Who is it?
Google Fiber.
Google?
Yeah. I, I know there, there are a lot of companies out there working, but that's the primary one that's here now.
The one we know is doing the most.
Come on, Google, do better.
And, and the people from Google we've worked with have been very good to work with, and good at coordinating, but I, I know there's different pieces involved there, so, um, we'll keep working with them and see what we can try to do. Um, I've asked them as well to kind of give us back some more, um, they have other ways for residents to communicate issues when they have them, so in, along with trying to prevent the issues from happening, if we can give them other people to contact so that they don't always have to, you know, go up to one of you all to then come to us and do this roundabout way of getting it to them, there are, you know, websites and phone numbers that Google has that they can call directly, um, to have the contractor go out there and fix those issues. So we'll work on getting some of that information, maybe post on the website or out on social media and things like that as well, to hopefully get them a more direct route to repair.
I, I'd call them out, just 'cause if they want people to use their service, they gotta put a good front when they're installing it, otherwise, anybody wanna buy it when they get it installed, so, maybe that'll motivate them to be good citizens.
They knocked out streetlights, and in my case, I turned one in on Pool Drive, which knocked out parking lot lights in the office right behind it, they knocked out a huge section of internet on, on Pool Drive last week, down toward South Connor Park, Southway Avenue, Buckingham, all that area.
Yeah.
And AT&amp;T was out there working, I had come back late, had to do something, it was dark, it was eight, nine o'clock, and AT&amp;T's out there working, trying to make repairs, so, of course, the sidewalk there looks like a mound of, uh, mountain range of clay, but anyway, they're...
Yeah, we've had the additional issue as well, that we've run into on our projects lately, too, is when you call to have the utility marked, utilities marked, it's been very inconsistent, so I think they're running into the same problem, that things are not being located in the right place, which makes it very hard to avoid hitting things when you don't know where they are, um, so I think they're running into the same problem, and I'm not sure what the issue is there, but it makes it more challenging.
Certainly learned that at the Vandoor Springs sidewalk.
Oh, we have found, yeah, we have found everything that you could possibly find out there.
Yes, Ms. Singleton, we both spent, uh, most of a holiday working on that.
Numerous times, if, I've had relayed information to staff, and staff is working on it, it's, I know, hard as fast as you can, but, uh, it's been a challenge over there, too, it's older development, and there's things in the ground. Uh, one of them, when they did the sidewalk on Buffalo Road, 'cause I live off New Haven, they found cables, I know, that weren't even known to be there, that were live, and stuff in conduit, they didn't know was there.
And there are live ones, and there are dead ones, and no one really knows which are which until you hit it, so...
We did learn from that experience with Mr. Singleton and I worked on, that one of the other telecom providers even admitted that they even had a type of product, that once it got put in the ground, it, they found it to be very hard to locate, so they're not, they, their understanding, I guess, that the, the location services aren't finding because of the type of product it was at the time, is making it very difficult, so I'm not giving the other, the other utility installer an out, but the one company whose, whose, uh, equipment or whose infrastructure got damaged even admitted that they had some things that were hard to find in the ground, so, it does get messy out there.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir.
That was it? Are you sure?
That's enough.
Okay. Well, the mayor's gonna, uh, just to mention a couple of things here, uh, some of you may know, and I'm planning to attend, I believe, Miss Behring, I know, Miss Behring, is the, is it called the State and Town, Town and State Dinner that, uh, sponsored by the North County League of Municipalities, and that'll be tomorrow evening around six o'clock at the Convention Center, I believe, so wanted to mention that. And speaking of State and Town, or actually, this is State of Town, I guess, uh, Rick is out there, um, he, uh, he and I worked on, on that, and, uh, it's, maybe already debuted, but we were planning to use it, uh, as an opening at our, um, uh...
Retreat.
Retreat, excuse me, yeah. Um, and so it's about, uh, nine or ten minutes, I forget, is that right? So, be sort of a review of some, some things in the town that you'll recognize. All right, uh, and I should, uh, can't let the night go by without, uh, recognizing the lady to my right, Ms. Behring, who today is celebrating a birthday.
No!
Okay, hit it, Danny.
Somebody set a precedent for singing "Happy Birthday."
Oh, my.
I was paying the last time, I don't know if we can do that.
You can have a pass on that if you want.
Mrs. Behring, uh, happy birthday, happy 29th birthday.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Singleton, I hear you, so, uh, that's all I have, so I guess, um, that's it.
Thank you.
Anything else from staff, for the good of the cause? Any, okay? All right, well, I believe it's, uh, almost, uh, striking nine bells, and that would be a good time to adjourn. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So, I declare this meeting of the Garner Town Council to be adjourned.